You to a sunny evening in Westfield after what nearly two inches of rain, I guess. But so to have the sun coming in is very welcome. Glad you're all here. We've got a lot of items on the agenda tonight, so we'll get right to it. We'll begin with our pledge of allegiance with our Eagle Scout Nearly Eagle. Close Eagle Scout Webb. He'll lead us in the pledge allegiance and we're very honored to have Rabbi Kirshiver here with us from the Indianapolis Hebrew Congregation who will give us a word before we begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're very honored to have the Rabbi with us this evening. I know the Indianapolis Hebrew Congregation has quite a presence here in Westfield. They have a cemetery there on just west of 31. They've been great citizens in here in Westfield. We were able to work with your people during the 31 construction project to work to put in an extra roundabout access to land north and south. Thank you for your gracious dedication of land there. And also, as we mentioned, I think a couple of months ago, they were also donated their half of the land for the Monon Trail adjacent to their property. So we're very grateful for that and very glad to have you here Rabbi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. They call the cemetery property there, it's a permanent residence.
Permanent?
Yeah, they will not be moving.
But they don't pay taxes?
A different kind of tax.
I guess that's right.
To a higher authority, as they say.
Yeah, you're right.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's really a privilege and honor to be with you this evening. In our tradition, it is not necessarily the right tone to set to offer exactly a prayer, but I do have words of blessing for you, as you said about this important task. Reminded of the words of Teddy Roosevelt, who was known for being frank and direct. And a year before he entered the White House in the year 1900, he wrote these words. "No community is healthy where it is ever necessary to distinguish a politician from his fellows because he is honest. Moreover, it is not enough that a public official should be honest. No amount of honesty will avail if he is not also brave and wise. The weak and the coward cannot be saved by honesty alone. It is true that leadership requires all these virtues that seem very simple until they become inconvenient: honesty, courage." And all of you have earned the right to be here today by winning the trust of your people in Westfield. Along with that honor comes the duty of humility, of integrity, and of service. And as for me, the chosen representative tonight of over the 15,000 Jewish families who reside and work in your neighborhoods and on behalf of the Indiana Board of Rabbis representing dozens of Jewish congregations throughout our state, I offer you these words of blessing. May your service always be guided by these twin principles of justice and mercy. May your actions always express the gratitude that we all feel for the gift of life and your opportunity to serve the people of this great city. May you act with character and conviction, listen with understanding and goodwill, speak with charity and restraint, and may all of us remember that we are stewards of the offices that we hold and not their owners. May we become the leaders that our people need us to be. May we see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and may we treat all persons, no matter how weak or how poor, with the reverence deserved of those created in God's image. And finally, may you feel renewed of strength and spirit in your work, the sacred, holy task of building up our community with your honesty, your wisdom, and bravery. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your meeting, sir.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Our first item tonight will be to look to our clerk for note the presence of a quorum.
Joe Edwards?
Here.
Bob Orque?
Here.
Chuck Layman?
Here.
Jim Ake?
Here.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Here.
Steve Hoover?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. I do believe that the agenda is accurate as presented. I don't know of any changes, so we will move ahead. And we will consider the minutes from the March 14, 2016 meeting. Those have been circulated, is there a motion?
Move to approve the minutes 3:14:16 as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will recognize anyone that would like to address the council on items that are not on our agenda. Anybody like to address the council?
No cards.
No cards?
No cards.
Anyone? Hearing, seeing none, we will move on. At this time, we will consider the approval of the claims.
Motion to approve April 11, 2016 claims.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion before we call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now have several special business, special presentations, and the first will be, we will hear from the Executive Director of Prevail, Susan Ferguson. So I welcome you to the podium.
Thank you. Thank you so much Mayor Cook for making sure that I was on the agenda and for you guys for all giving me five minutes. I really, really appreciate that. It's a great opportunity to be here. When we met with Mayor Cook just, I don't know, a week or two ago, didn't know that I would be on the agenda tonight, but it works out to be perfect timing. This is actually National Crime Victims Rights Week, so I'm happy to be here this week to talk to you about victims of crime. I'm assuming most of you are aware of Prevail, but just in case anyone in the audience is not. Prevail is a crime victim serving agency. We provide crisis intervention and restorative services to all victims of crime. The primary populations that we serve are victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. This also, April also happens to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month, so again, good timing that I'm here tonight to talk about that. All of our services are free of charge, they're confidential. We provide services to children, adolescents, and adults, and we aim to empower, educate, and strengthen those that we serve. Some of the services that we provide include support groups for victims of crime. We also provide individual services. We are the main entry point for protective orders in Hamilton County, so we do provide a variety of services to meet the needs of those crime victims that come through our doors. One thing I wanted to mention as part of Sexual Assault Awareness Month is we are doing the Clothesline Project. You may see some of these t-shirts around town. I brought a couple tonight just so that you could see them. I'll read what they say on them because I know it'll be difficult to see. This one says, "What happens to me doesn't define me. My heart is free," and has a picture, they're artwork on this. And then this one says, "Becoming visible," and has kind of a shadow picture of eyes on it. So these are just examples of, the Clothesline Project is actually a national project, but these were done locally and at Prevail, and it's really, these t-shirts are essentially a canvas for those people to tell their story about what has happened to them and present it to the community, because they've often been told that it's not okay to tell their story, that these are secrets, and to keep them secret. So this is their opportunity to publicly say, "This is what happened to me," and we would like the community to be involved in that. The other thing that's happening this week, and you may have received an invitation to our breakfast, which is this Wednesday at 8 o'clock at Cambria Suites in Noblesville, but you are welcome to attend that. It's just an opportunity for us to celebrate our, many of the volunteers and supporters that we have at Prevail, but would love for you guys to attend if you're able. And then we also are looking for opportunities to reach into Westfield. About 10% of our clients are from Westfield right now. We know there's others that we can reach all over the county and even further. So we want to make sure that people here know about us and that know that these services are free and available. And also, we're looking for leadership from Westfield. We do have, we are looking right now at some new board positions and are looking for board members and volunteers, so if there are people in Westfield that you think would be a good fit for maybe a nonprofit board, would love to have you get in touch with me or anybody at Prevail and kind of let us know about that. We'd love to talk to them. So I guess that's the information that I had. Yeah, so opportunities to reach out to Westfield, also partnerships. So we also do presentations all over the community and are happy to let people know about our services. So if you know of any service groups, clubs, things like that, that would be interested in more information, we'd be happy to provide that as well. So thank you so much again for your time. Didn't want to make this a long presentation, but just want to make sure that you are aware of what we are doing and that we are available for those services. So thank you so much.
Susan, where, both of your funding comes from where?
Good question. We get, about 40% of our funding comes from some government source. So we have some federal, some state, and some local funding. Hamilton County is also very supportive for us. About 30% comes from just generous people that support us and attend our events, and then the last 30% are from private foundations.
Okay, great. Well, you serve a huge need here in Hamilton County.
Thank you.
And similar to our youth assistance program, I think it's, it just shows that our community really cares, not only with their service, but with their dollars.
Absolutely.
And that we can provide these needed social services. So thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. We will move to a presentation by Mayor Cook.
... of our teen county park. I have a proclamation. We don't do over wear asses. You stopped at eight or nine years ago. And I paraphrase, so the monarch butterfly, this is what you're working on here, iconic species, caterpillar, butterfly, and I think one of the amazing things, they migrate en masse to a very specific location, isn't that right?
Right.
In Mexico. And how in the world, we don't know how. So Westfield wants to play a leadership role by launching its own monarch habitat program, and so therefore, we want to make a difference in preserving the monarchs. I notice the less and less of them, seems like every year. We can help that by introducing their plant of food and reproduction, the milkweed.
Yep, yeah, only plant that they can, they do.
Now, is the milkweed plant, I mean, is that safe? Can it be abused, invasive? What, are there different species?
There are different species of milkweed, and there are ones that may set a whole landscape a little bit better. Common milkweed is one that a lot of people grew at farms. It was poisonous to livestock, and it's, and there's some toxicity to it, but it's a safe plant and it's green for all pollinators, so it's lots of bugs on it, natural monarch caterpillars, it's a great interest source. It is completely safe plant. It can get a little aggressive in its habitat, maybe, but it can also provide a lot of opportunities for the milkweed, so, or for the monarchs. It's just sort of the way to look at it.
I haven't seen milkweed overpopulating here, but we are.
It's not like, you know.
It's like, wow, there's one right there. Yeah. And you know, last year, we had a little girl that planted a milkweed patch right out at Jason McGrath Park.
She did my Girl Scout project.
Okay, it was a Girl Scout project, yeah. And I visited her, I don't know, I visited her elementary school for some function, and she, that was one of the highlights of her year was doing, she wrote about it, so that was really, really good. So therefore, I, J. Andrew Cook, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 to be Mayor's Monarch Pledge Month here in Westfield, Indiana.
Thank you very much.
Time. There we go. Thank you.
No, you got it, you got it.
In return, we'd like to present you with this, Mayor Cook, for your belief in mission monarch. You've not only earned our respect, you've also earned your wings. And this is one of our brand new cans, hot off the presses, for you to wear on your apparel, supporting the monarch.
Get a look at that. And, and I have a package of common milkweeds.
We have one for all of the couples.
Thanks so much. Great job.
Prizes.
You want my seat? Okay, next, we have someone else for us, right? Okay, here we go. Arbor Day. Brittany, go first, step forward. You're representing your boss.
I am.
Good. Melody is where?
She is in, on vacation in Florida. I'm very jealous.
All this week's been something else, hasn't it? So I don't know how many years you've been doing this now.
Well, we are 2012, we're nine years.
Yeah, we're nine years, doing Arbor, and I also know this, my heart started in Nebraska, am I right? Yep, 1872. I actually got a letter about the number 188. Had the young grade, very, very, you know, in her handwriting, she wanted to know what Westfield was doing about planting more trees. So I wrote that today, and was able to tell her. We planted, oh, we've been a tree city for how long?
Many years.
Yep, we're going on our, ten, this year.
That's it, that little sign on the city, that little sign. We planted thousands of trees.
Lots.
Lots of trees. I know it's part of the, let's see, Germany, Germany, part of the Mill Street mitigation, you have to replant?
Several hundred, I think it's from the neighborhood.
Three hundred trees there, so yeah, I think, that's a matter of fact, we did. So, where at? This began in Nebraska, and this is the 140th annual version, and all the great things that trees do. And we are a tree city, we're very proud of that, and we're all a part of it, so we then declare that the 23rd day of April will be Arbor Day, and you have what plan?
We will be getting away 500 tree seed lanes for free, so it's going to be at Shelter on Ace of those parks, 100 blocks. Last year, we ran out of 45 minutes, so.
My notes are 20.
Because he passed, so it's like worth it now, so.
Good.
We'll have five tree, different species that will be planted out.
Great. All right.
And on behalf of other person, we would like to give you official.
Official hat.
No, he wanted me to pass it on.
Oh, look at that. Okay, thank you.
And Brittany, welcome to the podium. You're going to give us an update.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you for having us, Mayor, President, City Council. On behalf of Melody, I'm giving the quarterly, actually quarterly update, actually from fall 15 through basically February of this year. So I'll try to go quickly. I know that I don't want to run too quick. So starting off, our vision has changed a little bit as a Parks Department, so kind of going back through 15, our focus was programs, events, partners, trails, and parks. So these were our main focuses that brought the community of Westfield together. So starting off, touching on programs, kind of where we left off, we did offer some new classes in fall, yoga, Uker, cooking classes, all these classes have kind of filled up really, really quickly. So we tried some new things, and then ending up in the fall season, we had about a 66% increase in participation, increased revenue by about $8,000 during that season. And then December 31, as most of you know, we ended programming, and then our focus began to change. So going into events, as I had mentioned, we came up with a new mission statement. We have been charged to focus solely on community events in Westfield. So my role had changed. I'm now the Community Outreach Manager, focusing on event series, volunteer opportunities, sponsorships, and then Kelly and Emily, who are in the back, they have split up the larger events, and then of course, Melody has many responsibilities in our department. And so we've been charged to provide excellent community events for all residents and visitors of our community, and to maintain and develop parks and trails to add to Westfield's quality of life. And then as an event update, ending in, starting in August, we developed a new event mostly focusing on the Latino community. That event actually drew in about 700 people for a first-year event. We were very surprised at how well it went. We had things like mariachi band, lots of volunteers, kids' activities, and we're really excited for what this year's going to bring. Voices from the past, we had about 280 schoolchildren, 100 ticket sales, unfortunately, it was a lower month for us. The weather was pretty iffy on Friday, but for our Voices Tours, but hoping that'll pick up this year. October, we had 300 in attendance. We're continuing to encourage businesses to participate in this unique event that brings the community together. In December, we of course had Westfield and Lights, had about 3,000 people in attendance, lots of long lines, which we're looking forward to adding some new stuff this year to continue to grow that, that event. In February, it was our second year for Melt the Trail. We actually tripled our numbers in attendance for that, so we had about 300 people. Were able to write Valentines to about 100 seniors at Wallbrook. So just some cool opportunities that we've been looking and digging at how to bring just our community together. Bingo Brunch is now a popular event for our senior community. We've tripled attendance each month from our previous year, and we're continuing to grow that just through the sponsorship that we have, and because of the attendance numbers increasing, we've been able to make it better. We are now partnering with the library, so that is continuing each month, and we are continuing that as an event series. Let's see, what to look forward to. Over the winter season, things slowed down a little bit, but not really. We are doing a lot of planning. So kicking off the spring, we have started our Seeds of Knowledge workshops, which actually filled up completely to capacity in March, and we'll be continuing that through the fall season. I had already touched on Bingo Brunch, Arbor Day, we had discussed, which is going to be on Saturday, the 23rd. Community Plant Day is a really neat event that brings the community together to just help beautify Westfield, and we do that through our partnership with Heartland Growers on May 14. Summer, we are working on our bicentennial event, Follow the Drinking Gourd. It's going to be over, I believe, the 17th of June, mid-June, so we're going to be doing it Friday through Sunday. It's going to be a story on the Underground Railroad. Westfield Rocks the Fourth will be moving to Grand Park, so there's going to be a lot of planning going into that. Movies in the Park, we're ramping up on, and then of course, we'll be going into our second year of Amigos. Okay, and then next, we obviously cannot do a lot of what we're able to accomplish without our partners. Just to mention a few things, I know we have an Eagle Scout here. Through Eagle Scout projects, we're able to do things like installing just benches on the trails, swings, a sundial at Freedom Trail Park. We had four of those completed in 2015. These kids do all the funding and the planning for that, and we work alongside with them. We actually have quite a few planned for '16 that'll be happening, and one of those has already been completed at Simon Moon Park. We had a Girl Scout troop install a little library there. Moving on, for the entire year of '15, we, our sponsorships totaled in $47,250, which has been raised completely by our department in order to make these events happen. Obviously, through partnerships and sponsorships, these are able to be made possible. We had 217 people who donated 1,465 hours through volunteer hours, which is a huge number. And then, excuse me, next we have Trails, which we know that Melody works a lot with the rest of the city departments in order to make these possible and to make Westfield more connected. We completed three Monon projects during this time, and we were able to even include some fitness stations along the Monon Trail, which was made possible through custom concrete. And then looking forward, we have some phases that we're looking at completing, two phases for the Monon and one for Midland, that we're working on design and then land acquisition. And then, let's see, for parks, we were able to get a restroom constructed beginning in November, and we're hoping that'll be completed in the spring. That's going to be a year-round restroom for one of our popular parks. That's something that a lot of the community was really wanting, and we do some of our events there, so that'll make it just more, more adaptable for the families. And then Grand Junction Plaza, which of course, everybody's excited to get started, our design was completed, or it is, our construction documents are underway, and they're, they should be completed in August of this year. And then moving along, we have Land Collective has made the public presentation in January, and they're now working on finalizing construction documents. Phase one of Grand Junction will begin soon with the construction of the new alignment on Mill Street. I know I talked really fast, I was kind of in the way. And that is all I have for you guys. Do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the update.
Absolutely.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Ken Alexander. He's going to give us an update and some exciting news from Grand Park.
Well, I'd just like to say that right, right off the bat, it's, it's exciting to be in Westfield and to work with all the departments. I know we welcome all the effort and help that the Parks Department does, and certainly all the hours that the rest of the staff and specifically Public Works puts into making a lot of our, our efforts happen. I know that many times that, that comes around them trying to get ahead of projects so that we are not affecting the visitors as they come in. So I think before we really get into a lot of this, this Grand Park is really, it's a focus of the entire city, and it's something that we're very proud of. So real quickly, I, I wanted to make this as, as short as possible because we have a full agenda, but just kind of goes through our organizational goals. First off, the, you know, we look at everything from trying to gauge what we were going to do. Obviously, we have a wonderful facility that everyone recognizes, not just regionally, but internationally. And that also goes into safety and visitor experience. These things are something that are paramount to everything that we do. So we go through all of these ideas when we are moving forward with any type of project and anything that we're looking at, with how we're interacting with the people out there, this is the most important things that we look at. Obviously, from a facility overview, I think you all are aware of what Grand Park is. If not, please come out and visit me, I'd be happy to show you. Not on days tight today, but evenings like today would be, tonight would be wonderful. But we're really excited on all the improvements that we continue to make and, and as, and continue to offer, just an extra layer of experience to people that are coming. And like I said, it's really, this really is beyond just my small department. Aaron Shockley took one of the initiatives through our Communications Department, and really, you know, a year ago, last Department and really, uh, you know, a year ago, last month is when I started with, uh, moving from Public Works out to Grand Park. And, uh, she kind of, uh, started a little bit after that and really has ramped up her efforts to make things successful out there from the visitors, visitors' perspective. When you're bringing in a million people, a million visitors through that park, it's important to make sure that they, first off, know where they're getting to, and secondly, know where they, we want them to go have lunch or dinner or whatever, so that they try and do that, uh, north of a hundred and forty-sixth Street. Um, but, you know, as we look at how we are continuing to, uh, evolve, it's, uh, moving into public address systems that are a little bit more integrated across the campus as we look at Wi-Fi hotspots at the concession stands and things like that, because as we all know, uh, that anyone that has, uh, children or quite frankly, anyone that, under the age of twenty-five, if you're not, uh, designing something that is mobile friendly for your cellphone, then you're, you're losing a big part of your, uh, group that you're trying to attract. So we continue to grow and, and do things and really, uh, really depend heavily on Erin Shockley and all her volunteers that she brings in. So she's been a wonderful asset to the park. Um, but as, as we look at twenty sixteen, um, one of the things that's probably changed and, and, uh, I wanted to really put some time into was really starting a new direction and with, uh, with some of the sponsorship that we're looking at. And so, uh, we, we've, uh, entered into a contract with GS Sports Ventures. Uh, they're here to really help us, uh, move the, move the needle much, uh, much further in the direction we want it to get to. And so we'll just, uh, Matt Geske is here today. Uh, Matt, you wanna raise your hand? What, GS, uh, local company and, and really kind of trying to take something more from just selling a sign to really trying to, uh, focus on how do we return, uh, how do we have a return to the people that are investing in the Grand Park and really make them understand and acknowledge why this is something that's a good business decision? So, uh, you know, part of it starts off with educating how people get there. And I'd say that, that's one of the biggest things you have to overcome is trying to educate that this is more than just a, a local rec club, that this is a seven billion dollar industry that we are taking a large piece of out of the Midwest. And then it's, how do we really impact them? Well, we impact them by where their people and their customers are coming from. And as you can see, we're a na- a national sort of, these are just heat maps of just twenty fifteen teams that came to the park. And as you can see, there's a, ob- obviously a regional impact, but it really goes beyond our borders. It goes into Canada and I know that, I always like to say that one of our tournaments, we had eight teams from Hawaii, uh, one of which, uh, won a tournament at Grand Park last year. So it's, uh, I, and I tried to get with them and say, next time you're coming out this way, I'd like to do a, you know, maybe stay at their house. They can stay at mine. We can save some money. That'd be great, but, uh, we'll, we'll see. It's only going the wrong direction for vacation, but you know, that's okay. Um, now, as we look into twenty sixteen, some of the new things that we're looking at, I, I think the number one that thing and why I'm up here, not in my, not in a suit and tie, which I traditionally try not to wear ever, but, uh, typically, uh, you know, I wanna come and kind of present, uh, a professional manner. Well, our, our staff and the people that are at the park are, because of a new apparel sponsorship that we did through Adidas, they're all gonna be moving towards Adidas for everything we wear. And so, uh, Matt and Brandon, you want us wanna, this is, this is my team, by the way, the Grand Park team. They've got, turn around. They're, they, they, uh, they, they really make a lot of things happen out here. There's a runway if you guys wanna come down the center, but, um, they're, they're, uh, they're modeling some of the stuff that we just got our first shipment of, of apparel in that we're gonna be not only using for staff, but this is a sponsorship that, that goes beyond Grand Park. It's actually goes to every department within the city. That's gonna show a forty percent discount on anything that's Adidas. Uh, we have a, uh, a partner that we're gonna be getting all of those in, all that stuff through. And in addition, it comes with a sizable, a sizable, um, promotional, uh, package that, that we can then extend to others. One of the groups that was immediately, uh, I, we met with, uh, lots of different organizations, uh, including the schools and everyone else. And I know one of the ones that jumped on board right away was WYSI. Uh, they have, are now moving all of their gear towards Adidas and working it through our agreement because it's, it's better than the deal that they were getting through the Chicago Fire, their, their parent club in, in the MLS. So this is really a substi- a substantial, uh, um, substantial sponsorship. Matt, would, well, you said this was one of the largest Adidas, what was, what, what, uh, of apparel deal, certainly for a park? It's one of the largest deals that they've put together. And Matt would, would know, he comes from a background in the apparel, uh, industry, um, uh, out in Oregon. So that is one that's we're really excited about and I have some sizes because Adidas wanted to make sure that council, as well as some of the other folks up here, were able to start sporting their gear as well. For them, this is their billboard, putting this up on here and, and having people walk around on it. It's mobile and it, and it goes hopefully into lots of restaurants in Westfield. Um, as we move on, Estridge Championship Plaza, yeah, that's another one that you probably haven't heard of, but that's, uh, just coming out. We are working through the, you know, final stages of, of the stage and as entry point to it, but this will be an area between F1 and D1, which will be awards and other things like that from the park. And we're really excited to have them as a partner. Tournament Village, uh, is another one that I, I can't announce today, but is, again, we are really focusing on, uh, moving some major capital, uh, capital sponsors that can come in there and really, uh, help us out with some of those, uh, financial improvements that we need so that we can continue offering the experience that we want to the visitors. And obviously, I, I would be remiss to not mention some of the field sponsorships, Charlton Sundown Gardens, Duke Energy, because they really were the catalyst that really started into this and we really wanna make sure that those partnerships are acknowledged. And, uh, I guess lastly, uh, Indy Eleven, uh, they, uh, I guess they're oh, oh and two now, but, uh, this is now their official training headquarters. They had a last minute tie, I guess. I don't know. I guess that was good for them. So we're hoping that, uh, with our park, they continue to grow and get better, but they, they've, uh, they've brought in a whole nother, uh, a whole nother, they bring a whole nother level of experience to the park from a professional as they bring in other people to come travel the club that are looking at this facility and saying, this is really unbelievable. And we have more to come. I mean, this is, uh, since last year. Uh, the, uh, event term analysis, I just put this up here real quickly, just, we're showing a lot of growth. And what you'll see is last year was our full first year of activity and you'll start to see that this coming year, it will continue to grow. One thing that will, as, as we get more activity in the indoor facility, a lot of these numbers will go, go north, but, uh, obviously that, that opening will happen a little later in this year. But we're, we continue to, to track and mark everything that we possibly can, so we know exactly when, when things are coming. We can coordinate with other city, uh, park, uh, departments, certainly police and fire who are major partners and without them, things would not be running as smoothly as they do at the facility. Now, obviously, I mentioned Brandon and Matt, the Grand Park Operations Team. Uh, it really is much deeper than this because we are really truly engaged with all the partners that we have at the park, whether it's Indiana Sports Properties on the field sports side as a manager, or from bullpen tournaments managing the Diamond Sports side, or quite frankly Brickman or now Brightview who is, uh, manages our, our common areas and a lot of the mowing and facility maintenance that we do out there. Without those partners, this three people could not make it happen. So we, it's, uh, I couldn't put all their names up there for all the people that work in the facility, but I certainly wanted to give Brandon and Matt a chance outside of modeling to at least be acknowledged here in front of council. So that's kind of a quick update. Um, thank you for everything you provide for us and, uh, if there's anything, questions, I would be more than happy to answer some.
Thank you very much. Exciting. I wanna give a special thanks to, uh, both Brandon and Matt for all the efforts out there and Erin, and also to Matt Geske. Thank you so much for coming tonight and all your efforts to, uh, promote our, our little facility out there. We appreciate that. Moving on, we will go into our area of old business. The first item that, uh, first items that we are going to hear this evening, we're going to, uh, have Pam Howard give us an update on several resolutions. It will be Resolution sixteen dash one oh one, Ordinance sixteen dash oh one, Resolution sixteen dash one oh two, followed by Ordinance sixteen dash oh two, Resolution sixteen one oh three, and then Ordinance sixteen oh three. We're going to combine these for presentation purposes, but they are up for adoption consideration this evening and we will need to take them under, uh, administrative advisement, uh, one-on-one. So Pam?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Um, as you may recall, an amendment was approved incorporating new land into the Chatham Hills PUD. That was adopted in October of two thousand fifteen. The map on the screen shows you these four areas that were added into the PUD. The area that is furthest east on the map was already annexed into the city. The three areas to the west have not been annexed. The PUD ordinance requires that all land in the district be annexed to the city prior to approval and a recording of the secondary plat. Um, for this reason, you do again have three one hundred percent voluntary annexation petitions as well as three fiscal plans before you this evening. The annexation petitions did receive a public hearing on February eighth. Uh, no comments were stated at that time. Um, the fiscal plans are required to be adopted prior to the annexation ordinances, and as the president said, each item does need to be acted upon separately. At this time, I am available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Pam? Now, as I understand it, we, we need to pass the three ordinances, correct?
Yeah, the, um, the fis- the fiscal plans, which are the resolutions, I believe, need to be adopted first and then the or- the accompanying ordinance can be adopted.
They have to be done individually?
Yes.
Katie, thank you. All right, council, any comments before we take this action? We will need to administratively handle these one at a time. Is there a motion?
I move, we, uh, approve Resolution sixteen one oh one fiscal plan for annexation, the Chatham Hills Phase Five. Second.
All in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Resolution passes. Ordinance sixteen dash oh one?
I move to approve sixteen, uh, dash one oh two.
One oh one, ordinance?
Sixteen oh two, sorry. One hundred percent voluntary.
Oh one.
Oh, one. Oh, okay. I thought we had to pass the, uh, fiscal plan first. Okay. I'll move to, uh, approve ordinance sixteen oh one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Resolution sixteen dash one oh two, a motion please?
Move to approve Resolution sixteen dash one oh two fiscal plan for annexation, ordinance sixteen dash two.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Aik. All those in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance sixteen dash oh two?
Move to approve ordinance sixteen dash oh two, hundred percent voluntary annexation.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution sixteen dash one oh three?
I move to approve sixteen one oh three fiscal plan for annexation, Phase Seven.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance sixteen dash oh three?
Move to approve ordinance sixteen oh three, the one hundred percent voluntary annexation.
Second.
Phase seven.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover, Mr. Rorkey. All in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, we have ordinance sixteen dash oh five. This will be the Spring Mill Station Quadrant PUD. Pam?
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the council. Before you this evening for adoption consideration, we have an amendment to the Spring Mill Station Northeast Quadrant PUD, which is the PUD that contains the Kroger at the northeast corner of one sixty-first Street and Spring Mill Road. The purpose of this PUD amendment is to permit a monument sign for the new fuel center. The previous fuel center did have a monument sign, but the, uh, new one was not permitted one because the current UDO does not permit monument signs for outlots. As a part of this, um, PUD amendment, the current canopy sign, which is located on the rear or east elevation of the fuel center canopy, will be removed at the time the monument sign is installed. The petitioner has worked with the Spring Mill Station Task Group regarding the design and visibility of the sign. This item did receive unanimous favorable recommendation at the March twenty-first Plan Commission meeting. Since that time, there has been a change made to the text of the ordinance based on some late comments received from the task group. The text now requires substantial compliance with the sign shown in Exhibit Two in lieu of being required to be proposed as shown in Exhibit Two. This will allow a design that better matches the existing Spring Mill Common sign and is consistent with the task group's design preferences. This item is available for adoption consideration tonight, as I stated, and I do have Paula Gartner with EMHNT who is available for questions, as am I, if you have any of staff. Thank you.
Do we have any, uh, this is up for council adoption tonight. Is there a motion regarding this Ordinance sixteen dash oh five, please?
Motion to approve.
Second, please.
Second.
The item is open for discussion. Any comments or questions?
I would just, I wanted to clarify, uh, that the sign shown there is not representative of what the Spring Mill Station Group prefers and would change from that once the sign, once they apply for their sign permit.
Yes, that current design, um, was created, I believe, to match the exist, the, um, the actual Fuel Center Depot building, whereas it's the group's preference that the sign matched the existing, um, Spring Mill Common sign, which looks more like the old Kroger sign as far as the, um, the brick and the, the cap on the top of the monument go.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we have for consideration Resolution sixteen dash one oh five. Yes?
Mr. President, I'll, I'll be standing in for Mr. Pullman tonight.
Okay.
Um, what you have before you this evening is the, uh, Neighborhood Plan for Village Farms. This is the product of over a year's worth of work with that neighborhood organization. And, uh, this plan has been adopted by the, uh, Village Farms Homeowners Association and it has been presented to you, uh, at your last meeting in March. Since then, it has been presented to the Plant Commission. A public hearing was held, received a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plant Commission, no public comment, and it returns to you with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you. This is up for adopt- adoption this evening. Is there a motion?
Move that we approve Resolution sixteen one oh five, Village Farms Neighborhood Plan, the comprehensive plant amendment.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Discussion? Hearing, none. All those in favor, signify by the saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pullman. I mean, Mr.?
You can call me anything.
Call me anything.
Thank you.
Moving to ordinance sixteen dash oh eight, Storm Water Fee Schedule. Jeremy, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors, Mr. President, and Mr. Mayor. Um, before you tonight, uh, for public hearing and adoption consideration is ordinance sixteen dash zero eight, uh, Storm Water Fee Schedule, uh, for the city of Westfield. Uh, the ordinance was introduced on, at the last meeting on March fourteenth. Uh, and, uh, since then, we have held a public workshop, uh, involving council. It was notice, notified to the public, um, to provide feedback. Uh, as a result of that, there were no changes to the ordinance and ordinance sixteen dash oh eight is as introduced. Um, this ordinance will modify the structure of our storm water, um, This ordinance will modify the structure of our storm water billing system and change to a more industry-standard impervious surface calculation for rates. At this time, I would entertain any questions you might have. I also have Sheila McKinley of Christopher Burke Engineering, which is our consultant group that helped us with the rate study.
Jeremy, excuse me, how does this ordinance compare with other communities?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
How does this ordinance compare with other communities?
It is very similar. Christopher Burke, our consultant, does this work for many of our neighboring communities as well. Obviously, our ordinance is slightly different, but the structure of the rate system is very similar to our neighbors and as well as the other storm water systems.
So, we're not doing anything that other communities are not doing then?
That's correct. All of them are just a little bit different. Everyone has their own little nuances, but largely, it is the same.
Any other questions? It is advertised, it's scheduled for a hearing tonight, public hearing. So, I believe at that time, we will move ahead to do that. Okay, at this time, it is 7:53 and I will open the public hearing for the storm water fee schedule, ordinance 16-08. Do we have any cards?
We do not, Mr. President.
Does anyone in attendance wish to address this issue? This is your time from the public to make comments. Hearing, seeing none. I will close the public hearing at 7:54. Counsel, this is up for adoption consideration. Jeremy can answer any questions or if you have any comments prior to that, but it is now ready for for adoption.
Can I make a comment?
You may make a comment.
You know, this is something that is definitely needed and you can look around and know that it's needed, especially this time of year. One thing that was not really spelled out, now, we do have the three-year graduated ERU, which should help our businesses avoid the shock of this increase on them, and I appreciate that. Right after that, we talk about the non-residential, let me find. All non-residential properties in the district will get that graduated rate. But then, would that be including the unimproved property because they're under a different category? But it makes it sound like they too fall into that language. That's referring to Section 9C and E. I just wanted to see if anyone else saw that as a bit unclear or if it was only me. I mean, we know that they're getting, that they have their undeveloped land amount and they're not paying that increase.
The unimproved properties will be handled the same as residential and it would be a full rate. Well, it's, in their case, it's a third of an ERU from the beginning, so there's no graduation on that.
Right. Just the way it was reading, it made it seem like they might have graduated, but it didn't seem like there was a reason to do that for them. Okay.
Any other comments? Would entertain a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance 16-08 storm water fee schedule for the city of Westfield.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoover, thank you. Any other discussion before the vote?
Just comment that this is something that we have been reviewing for over a year, I believe. It's something we have recognized as an issue and it just took us a while to iron out the process. And I mean, this is clearly, to me, a much more defensible process than what we had. And we're actually charging more or less by the impact that impervious surfaces have on our storm water. So, it makes a lot of sense. We've been working on this a long time and it's a time that we move forward.
Any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work and efforts. Appreciate that.
Jeremy, you're already making a difference and you just got this passed. Today was the first day coming up Kerry Road. Because of your little project there, we had nearly two inches of rain and it's the first time after that kind of rain, you haven't had to hang out the high water sign. So, you're already working on it. Good.
And our teams were out today digging all the debris out of the storm sewers. They were working hard today.
And we passed this so we could pay them to do that. Moving to new business, we will consider Resolution 16-109. It's facade improvement program. Brian, you can give us a couple of minutes. Okay, let's do that. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. For the record, my name is Jennifer Miller. I'm with the Economic and Community Development Department. And tonight, I'm going to provide you with a quick update on the facade improvement program. Since its adopt, since the ordinance adoption of 10/22 in 2011, the intent of the program has been to assist local business owners and property owners in making improvements to their properties and beautifying the downtown area. Through this program, 10 business owners have been assisted on 12 different projects. Presently, we have two new applications under review. Since the council's initial funding of $50,000 in 2011, the return for the community has been over $148,000 in improvements. In 2015, the program had four new applicants, including the Italian House on Park, ADS Cabinets, which is featured on this slide, Bash Boutique, and The Union. The program committee has made grants totaling $17,900 in 2015 alone. And the return on that investment was an added value of $56,503 to downtown Westfield. Work on these projects included things like repainting, entrance repairs, signage, concrete work for outdoor dining areas, among other projects. Here, we have before and after pictures of The Union, which is kitty corner to City Hall. We have before and after photos of the Italian House on Park. And these are a couple of older projects. We have Gemini General Contracting and Westfield Pharmacy, Union Street Flowers and Gifts, parking lot improvements. This concludes my update. Just as a reminder, in addition to the resolution you're about to consider, we also have need of a council appointment to our committee. If you have any additional questions, I am available at this time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This has been a very effective program and it's time that be refunded. We probably should have done this last year, so I encourage everybody on this council. It's made a big impact on our downtown to look at this in a positive light. And it's time to transfer some funds. And we're talking about $10,000 to get the ball rolling and carry us through the end of the year.
Mr. Councilman, and I might add, we've had some offline discussions, but it's something as we ramp up for next year, it's something that you may want to consider when we're in budget mode so we're not having to do this midstream again, if it is the council's will to do this.
Any other comments? We have this resolution before us.
Motion to approve Resolution 16-109.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
I would.
Now, we need to have a volunteer.
I would like to nominate Joe Edwards if he would be willing to serve since he is a more of a, more or less a downtown resident.
Downtown Joe. I will, I'll do that.
So, there's a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Edwards. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joe?
Aye.
You have, you have your, are you going to bring your checkbook with you?
It might not be a very big thing.
We appreciate your efforts and your willingness to participate. It's been a good program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to Resolution 16-110. We have a presentation by Kevin Todd regarding the tax abatement program.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. Tonight, for your consideration by resolution is the annual tax abatement compliance review as required by Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1. Please note on the screen, we can zoom in as needed, but this is a summary of all of our abatements on one chart. This lists all of our active, our recently expired, and our recently approved abatements and their annual benefits. The far right column lists the total abatement award for each individual abatement. And the bottom row lists the annual total abated tax amounts year after year. Each abatement recipient is required to annually submit compliance forms to the city in order to confirm progress towards the benchmarks contemplated when the abatement was originally awarded. This evening, the council will need to determine substantial compliance with the statement of benefits from the abatement, from the, from the abatement approvals. There are currently 11 active abatements, five personal property abatements, and six real property abatements is the breakdown. Tonight's resolution includes 10 of the 11 active abatements. The one that is not included tonight was originally approved for the Indiana Brick Corporation. That subject property of that abatement was acquired by Jackson Development last year. There are currently three abatements that have been approved but are not yet active because full assessment of the improvements has not yet been performed. We anticipate these assessments occurring in 2017 and the abatement period starting next year. Quickly, just to highlight those three for you, the first one is the remodel and building addition for AgReliant. The second is for the new industrial spec building of approximately 130 or 133,000 square feet for Jackson Development. And then, the last is a new building relocation for Duramark Technologies. Also, last year was the final year for the personal property abatement for standard lock nut as indicated on the chart. As a result, there's no information for review or processing this evening. So, of the 10 abatements that are a part of the resolution this evening, eight of them have either reached their projections for employment, employment numbers, salaries, and improvements in investments, or are on a reasonable trend towards reaching those projections by the end of their abatement period. The other two abatements are older abatements that were granted right before the recession. Each of these businesses, specifically Custom Concrete and Custom Cast Stone, are in the final year of their abatement period. We've communicated with these businesses and they've indicated to us that they've both weathered through the recession, but like many companies, were forced to make some cuts during that time. As a result, the estimated employment numbers and salary numbers that were projected with their abatement in original statement of benefit forms have not been achieved for either company. However, the overall value of the reported investments does exceed the estimated values in both cases. Also, both businesses report an increase in employment and salary numbers over last year, which would seem to indicate an upward trajectory. In recent years, the council has approved these abatement compliance reviews for businesses that have been struggling while coming out of the recession. And I believe there are representatives from those businesses here this evening in the event you have any questions. This resolution is before you this evening for adoption consideration. The council's action is time-sensitive because the individual entities are required to file their deduction forms with the county by May 15th. And it is helpful to the county for the city to complete their approval prior to that May 15th deadline. So, with that, I'll close and make myself available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Kevin, I have, I have a question. As I was reviewing this, I, there's just something maybe you can explain to me. On automatic pool covers, the abatements typically start higher and as they fall off, the value goes down. Theirs has gone up and then down and then up and then down. Can you explain why we see so much difference there?
Yeah, I think the first two years were probably due to being partially completed and then it probably goes up. And then, I'm, I'm not sure about, let me dial in here. I'm speculating, Steve. I don't, I can't tell you. I do know that, I think Michael Shebeck's here, but he may not even know. He doesn't know. It's, it's all how the property is assessed, so I'm sure that, let me look here.
It just, they started real low and that could be during the construction, but it just, it just didn't follow near the typical path.
So, to tell me, are you looking at this chart when you're saying that?
Yes.
Okay, so, this was probably a partial completion. That was probably a really low partial completion. Yeah, but it's very convoluted. And so, it goes up and then, and then the reason the benefit, this one, the five-year, is the property. It's not real property, it's equipment. Yes, personal. Yes. And so, he's added equipment, but then it starts to fall off and then he, yeah. Yeah, it goes up, 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 and then it starts to fall off because well, right here, see this, the trending? So, it's gone up, it's gone up, it's gone up, but then this, every year, it burns off 20%. So, it's 100%, 80%. Does that make sense? 60, 20, 60, 40, 20, so it's.
That makes sense, the numbers. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't an error. I mean, it just didn't look normal and I couldn't explain in my own mind why it was what it was. I'm sure there's an explanation, just wanted to clarify. Maybe something we want to.
But those are actuals. What you're seeing there on 14, 15, and 16 are actual benefits conferred.
That is, that's a good point. In the manufacturing sector, as, as their investments per year do fluctuate, their, their rate or their amount of deduction or their, their abatement does go down, but their investment could go up, would continue to go up.
And these, these are assessments made by the county assessor's office. And so, they're, they're inspecting, seeing. And so they're, they're inspecting, seeing what's been invested, and they understand the terms of the abatement that you approved, and they're applying those, that schedule.
That would tell me that they've made a significant investment beyond, well, year after year, because the rate does go down, or their, their, the abatement portion does drop off. They're only, they're only on five years. Any other comments or questions? This is up for council consideration for adoption tonight. It does require action. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution sixteen dash one one zero.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Resolution sixteen one one zero passes. Thank you, Kevin.
Good job. Thank you.
Last item under new business, Resolution sixteen dash one one one. Mr. Bertrand, you want to give us a minute?
Members of council, this resolution really is kind of the start of the planning season for budget year twenty seventeen. This is a procedural step that if, in fact, we do come before you seeking authorization for an ordinance for a general obligation bond, much like we did this past year in two thousand and fifteen for the two thousand and sixteen budget, part of our tax management strategy, this would enable us to use proceeds for costs that are related to these particular capital items that are noted in this resolution for us to reach back and reimburse ourselves, the city, for, with these bond proceeds. Again, this is a timing issue as we launch and look for, towards twenty seventeen. So again, it's a replication of what we did in fifteen for sixteen. Net of the reimbursement resolution, we did not ask that of you last year because of the timing of when we went to market with the bond. So we have that ability this year. It's a common strategy based upon the advisor, our financial advisor. With that, I'll yield the microphone and answer your questions.
Thank you. This is up for adoption consideration tonight. Is there a motion?
Move to approve Resolution sixteen dash one eleven.
Is there a second, please? Thank you.
Now, Todd, this is for to, if we have to lease police cars or equipment. But it's projected into the two sixteen budget, or two seventeen budget.
Correct. We have an obsolescence strategy, the chief rush, and we're trying to get into a sequence where we're not taking, we're trying to get a better sequence of obsolescence. And as you know, the few bonds that was incorporated in the two thousand and sixteen budget is a consolidation of many different fragmented lease options. So working with the chief, we're actually trying to hold off the need for those purchases till later this year, second half of this year. So we're looking ahead, council, into the two thousand and seventeen lease. If you'd be interested.
Just from my knowledge, are all these vehicles leased? They're not purchased, they're leased?
It's a lease purchase.
Lease purchase.
It is. So what we do at the end of the lease, Chief Rush and Chief Lyons and Jeremy, we'll take those and try to get a resale value out of them and buy additional vehicles, consolidate net proceeds of those, and have less going into this year like this.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Counselors, anything that does conclude our business, open for council comments?
An update from APC meeting last week. The Village Farms Neighborhood Plan was moved forward with a positive recommendation. We took action on that tonight. Had a public hearing on Indianapolis Hebrew Congregation, EUD. Had a public hearing on that. The EUD for Northview Christian Life Church had a public hearing. Development plan for Oak Trace Kindergarten Expansion had a public hearing. A development plan for Washington Woods Kindergarten Expansion had a public hearing. The Westfield Business Center Development Plan had a public hearing. A development plan for Circle K on East Street, East one hundred and fifty-first Street had a public hearing. And had a public hearing for the sub-district addendum, the junction sub-district addendum to the comprehensive plan. We had a lot of public hearings. That was it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to congratulate our police department. The Chief Rush, Lieutenant Allen, and Mayor went over to St. Louis to accept an accreditation award, which came from the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, which shows the commitment and dedication of our police force to the city and the upgrades they made to go after this voluntary excellent law enforcement accreditation. So you are to be commended, sir. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, counselor, egg following up on that, it was, it was quite an honor. It was, it was no small task. You know, Mike Allen, Lieutenant Allen, has been working on that project for eight or nine years. And there were probably a hundred agencies there in St. Louis, from all over the country, and all different types of policing agencies, and to see our little city there amongst some of the, of the larger jurisdictions was quite an honor. And I know Mike Allen was extremely nervous from breakfast Saturday morning. We had actual interviews, so to speak, in addition to their, to their visits. We all had to get up on a stand and got somewhat drilled by their, by their accreditation people. So Mike was, was nervous as could be until dinner that night when he finally got that certificate in his hand. So he was, he deserves a lot of credit for what he did there. It was great, just fantastic. Had lunch at noon with the men and lady of B Shift Station eighty-two. I tried to get around to all of our, our fire departments and enjoy their fine cuisine throughout the city, throughout the year. Our Clean City Initiative that we spoke about, that we put underway, is, is well underway. Our contractor has probably completed about fifty percent, I think, of our thoroughfares. I just saw some brand-new fast-food trash in the ditch on Oak Road. It just really honks me off. So stop and pick that up, Chuck. And we'll be working next on thirty-one. I think we're going to actually be picking up thirty-one four times a year. So it's, that should make a huge difference out there. If you get down around one hundred and forty-six, it's, it's really an embarrassing mess, and then we'll, we'll keep it maintained very well from that point on, once we gain full control of the thirty-one corridor. Couple of Grand Park notes. The WYSI, our youth rec league kicks off this Saturday on Field D sixteen, the annual throw-out-the-pitch. And this year, they are also bringing softball to Grand Park as part of our rec program. It's growing. Later this month, the weekend of April twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, will be the largest event groups that we've ever held at, at Grand Park. We will have the Nike EYBL basketball event at the new fieldhouse, where there will be the, really the top juniors and seniors, I believe, college basketball players from all over the country. There'll be some three hundred Division One scouts from all over the country attending. And that, at the same time that we have a very large baseball, the Crossroads of America College Showcase on the soccer side, the baseball side. We're projecting an estimated forty thousand visits to Grand Park this weekend. That's more people than live here. So it'll be a busy weekend, and we've been planning on it for quite some time. And speaking of how many people are here, the census actually wrapped up this past week. They should be completed with their official numbers in about ninety days. They were able to tell me that our people's estimate of what they thought it was, was awful darn close. And so we have grown at a, at a sizable amount. You can, we ought to have a contest and guess what we think the population is maybe. Okay. Parks Department, you heard about them a little bit earlier. We also have the, they, in conjunction with the county tourism, will be having two events on April twenty-third, busy weekend, the Tree of Hope Celebration, where we have scouts actually planting trees, and we're back to Arbor in all of our city parks, and of course on the Arbor Day that we already talked about at Asa Bales. As I mentioned, the census is, is completed, and we just went over the Monarch Butterfly. That was the other issue, the remarks we had down for tonight. So as usual, there's a lot going on.
Thank you. Just as a point of interest, what's, what time is the pitch out for WYSI? On Saturday, is that correct? Field D sixteen, right?
D sixteen, says Mike Allen at eight thirty.
Thank you. Just a note of, of interest, this weekend is also a big event in our downtown Indy. It is the Susan G. Coleman Race Walk for the Cure. And anybody that's had, has been touched by those issues probably knows about that event, so there are going to be a lot of people around. I think that attracts some thirty or forty thousand people as well, so that'll be, be a big weekend. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate a little better. That does complete our business tonight, and without objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all.